Good evening. I now call the March 13th, 2019 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. The next item for business will be our invocation, and I'd like to turn the mic over to our student liaison Xavier Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith, we have a packed house tonight, which is very exciting. But as it is our custom today, we have a student from Phoenix pre-K through eight, an eighth grade student by the name of Autumn Billups, and she is going to do our pledge of allegiance and invocation today. So if everyone will please rise as Autumn leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today I will be reading Cage Bird by Maya Angelou. A free bird leaps on the back of the wind and floats downstream to the current ends, and dips his wing in the orange sun rays and dares to claim the sky. But a bird that stalks down his narrow cage can seldom see through his bars of rage. His wings are clipped and his feet are tied, so he opens his throat to sing. The caged bird sings with a fearful trill of things unknown but long for still, and his tune is heard on the distant hill for the caged bird sings of freedom. The free bird thinks of another breeze and the trade winds soft through the sighing trees and the fat worms waiting on a dawn-bright lawn and names the sky his own. But a caged bird stands on the grave of dreams, his shadow shouts on a nightmare scream. His wings are clipped and his feet are tied, so he opens his throat to sing. The caged bird sings with a fearful trill of things unknown but long for still, and his tune is heard on the distant hill for the caged bird sings of freedom. Thank you.
Fantastic job, Autumn. You can actually come back to the podium. Just a couple of questions for you, so we can get to know a little bit more about you. So it says here that you're an eighth grade student at Phoenix pre-K through eight, so that looks like you're getting ready to think about high school.
Yes, sir.
You excited about high school?
Yes.
You know what school do you want to go to yet?
Bethel.
Bethel High School. Your principal, there we go. Some Bruins are in the house. And, you know, so it seems like your favorite subject would be English, by the way you read it. Yeah. Like, English. Are you thinking about what you want to do in the future in terms of career goals?
When I get older, I would like to be a zoologist.
Wow. It's awesome. Love of pets and so forth. That's awesome. Let's get to know a little bit more about the people you brought today. Can you introduce them to us?
Okay. This is my mom. That's my sister. And that's my grandmother, and that's my other sister.
Can you all stand to be recognized? Thank you. And anyone from your school today as well?
This is Ms. Pace. This is Ms. Mason. Ms. Hunt Quinshaw. Ms. Haynes. Ms. Gray. Ms. Brown.
Can you all stand to be recognized, please? Well, Autumn, thank you for joining us today, and I know that you'll be very successful as you pursue your career of zoology and even as you hopefully will be a Bruin next year at Bethel High School. And eighth grade was a fun time for me, so I hope you enjoy the rest of the school year. Much success to you, and thank you so much, everyone, for being here with Autumn. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Anytime.
Any comments from board members? Autumn, we just want to thank you again for coming tonight, and thank your parents for allowing you to be here. Absolutely. When you were doing your presentation, you could see the grins from over in that corner and all of the heavy smiles coming from the middle. So we know you have already been programmed for success, and you've got a great life ahead. And it looks like the Bruins are waiting for you to step through the doors. So good luck to everything you do, especially with the rest of the year and moving forward. Thank you again for coming. Our next item of business is the adoption of the Agenda 1.03. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we adopt tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is number two, recognitions. And for that, I'd like to turn it over to our Executive Director for Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gore, who will be assisted by our Vice Chair, Mr. Joe Kilgore.
A little bit shorter than you. Well, thank you, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton Schools family. Tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate several student athletes. So at this time, I'm going to ask Janelle Saunders, Jelani Davis, E.J. Richardson, Jonathan Mitchell, Jaden Mitchell, Jordan Ross, and their coaches, Joe Strangus and Annette Gaines, to please join us on stage, as well as Jordan Hardy and Jordan's coach, Ron Beaton. Ask you all to come and line up here for us. Perfect. Straight down and face the audience.
On Friday and Saturday, February 22nd and 23rd, the Class V Virginia High School League State Indoor Track and Field Championship Meet was held at the Boo Williams Sports Complex. Hampton City Schools brought home several championship titles.
So first off, we have Janelle Saunders from Bethel High School, who is the VHSL Class V State Championship in the high jump. Janelle, would you please step forward? Janelle's jump was five feet, six inches, which, if you kind of put that into perspective without heels, I'm five foot three. So that's quite an impressive jump. So great job, Janelle. All right, next, we have Jelani Davis, also from Bethel. Jelani, please step forward. Jelani won the state championship in the shot put event, and Jelani's throw was 42 feet, 9.5 inches. Very impressive. Congrats. All right. E.J. Richardson, another Bruin, please step forward. All right, are y'all ready? This is a bunch. E.J. won two individual state events. He won the 500-meter dash with a time of 1 minute and 4.13 seconds. He also won the 300-meter dash with a time of 34.31 seconds. And E.J.'s 300-meter dash time, he set a new state record. So congratulations. All right, but he's going to stay forward, because he's not done. And with him is going to join him is Jonathan Mitchell, Jaden Mitchell, and... Who else? Jordan Ross, please step forward. We've got three. All right, so which one is Jaden and which one is Jonathan? All right, that helps. All right, these young men are also all from Bethel High School, and they are the Bethel High School Boys 4x400-meter relay team, and they can call themselves state champions. Their time of 3 minutes and 22.88 seconds set a new state record. And our Bruins did not do this on their own. They have two great coaches. They are coached by Joe Strangus and Annetta Gaines. Would you also please step forward to be recognized? Next, we have Jordan Hardy, who is home of the Kravers. Would Jordan step forward? And Jordan won the state championship in the girls' triple jump. She jumped 38 feet and nine inches to bring home the title. So congratulations to Jordan. And I'm going to also ask her coach, Mr. Ron Beaton, to step forward to be recognized. I'm going to let Mr. Kilgore take over the mic a moment. I know he passed out the certificates as we went, but he still has a few things he'd like to say.
On behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, the Hampton School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I want to congratulate you, and it's my honor to present you or have presented you with these certificates of achievement. And I'd like to read for everyone what their certificates read. They say, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to you for the events that Ms. Gore listed above." And we'd also like to thank the coaches. And if we'd like to invite the coaches, if they'd like to say a couple of words to come on over and speak about these amazing athletes.
First, we'd like to thank the School Board for acknowledging these athletes. Coach Joe and I have had the pleasure of being here every year for the last four or five years or so, recognizing these athletes. I just want to add that all of these athletes from Bethel set a new meet record in all of their events at the state meet. They also had a chance of competing at Nationals. Janelle is your new emerging elite national high jump champion. She jumped five feet, eight, and three-quarters of an inch, and she also set the new meet national record. Also like to add that Janelle is ranked number two in the high jump in the state. Jelani is ranked number two in the shot put in the state. E.J.'s ranked number one in the 500 and the 400, I mean, the 500 and the 300, and is also ranked number one in the U.S. in the 500. As much as we love their athletic ability at the home of academic excellence, we also like to acknowledge their student achievements collectively. Well, Jordan's not here today, but collectively, these six athletes have a cumulative GPA of 3.6. Two of them exceeding 4.0. Jelani has a 4.1, and E.J. has a 4.04. And Jelani has a whole bunch of offers, has not yet committed, but E.J. will be attending the University of South Carolina on a scholarship, and Jonathan will be attending VCU on a scholarship.
First of all, I would like for Coach Antonio Wood to stand up, please. Coach Wood is Jordan's personal coach. All I do is collect the fees and kiss the babies. Jordan, aside from winning the state, is ranked the number-two sophomore in the United States in the triple jump. She has also attended a camp down in Cuba, and she has been recognized as one of the future Olympians for probably, I guess, 2024. And, you know, we often talk about the village, you know, raising a child, but let us not downgrade the importance of parental environment. I would like for her parents to stand up, hardest. They're the reason that Jordan is standing up here. They're the one that got her started. Thank you.
Again, on behalf of the Board and the Superintendent, we're very proud of each of you and encourage each of you to keep striving for great things. Let's give these great athletes another big round of applause.
And we do have one more recognition this evening, so let our scholar athletes, very scholarly after all those GPAs, have a seat. And at this time, I'm going to ask Brianna Romney and her coaches, Jo Stickell and Melissa Smith, to please come join us up on the stage. All right, come on up. So on February 16th, the Class V Virginia High School League State Swim Championships were held at George Mason University Aquatic Center. Kickitane High School's Brianna Romney brought back to Hampton two state championship titles. She is the state champion in the 50 free with a time of 23.38 seconds and the 100 free with a time of 50.96 seconds.
On behalf of the Chair, Ms. Cherry, the entire Hampton City School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I'm honored to present you with this certificate of achievement from Hampton City Schools for a job well done. The certificate reads, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Brianna Romney, Kickitane High School, swimming 50 free and 100 free, Virginia High School League Class V State Champion." Would either of the coaches like to say something about this exceptional athlete?
All right, I didn't know I was speaking tonight, so I don't have all the information that you heard in the other presentation. But I would like to say that Brianna has been a very good swimmer ever since she was a little child, and I've been watching her since she was about eight years old. And I actually coached her brother a number of years ago. So I knew, even at eight years old, she was going to be a very great swimmer. And she's proven that to me. She's also very a pleasure to coach. I have enjoyed coaching her. She's a junior this year. She's got one more year. And it's something that a lot of people don't know, because you don't get notified, at least in the swimming world, because apparently there are some schools in the country that swimming is a spring sport instead of a winter sport. So you don't find out whether you make All-American status until after the school year's done. But Brianna, last year, did qualify as an All-American in the 50 freestyle, and I will be submitting her times again this year, and I anticipate she'll probably make it in both the 50 and the 100 this year. So congratulations.
Again, congratulations on behalf of the Board, and let's give Brianna another great big round of applause.
All right, before we close, as they're having a seat, we would like to recognize some other important guests that are in the audience here tonight, who are absolutely always supporting our scholar athletes. So would all of our honorees' parents please stand to be recognized at this time? Other family members or special guests that are here with all of our scholar athletes, please stand to be recognized. We have some other individuals in the room. We have our Kickitane Administrator, Dr. Charmaine Grove, that's here. I saw our Hampton Administrators, Ms. Tiffany Hardy and Mr. Kevin Davis, I believe, came out. And I did see Mr. Ralph Saunders, Dorothy Garrity, Greg Hopson, and I believe Mr. Harris. Did I get everyone? And I know that our Athletic Directors are busy, because our spring sports did kick off this week, so a lot of, they were not able to join us. But I do want to give a special thank you to Mr. Lucas Brown, as well as Lee Martin and Richard Fortune, who are the Athletic Directors at those three schools and have done a phenomenal job. Mr. Maurice Ward is also our Athletic Director at Phoebus, and we did not recognize Phoebus this evening, but he is also doing a phenomenal job, so thank you. And a special thank you to Ms. Beth Mayer, who is with us tonight. She is our Coordinator of Athletics for Hampton City Schools and really does a phenomenal job. So if you would stand to be recognized. Thank you all to all of your hard work, your dedication to Hampton City Schools and to our young people. Thank you for being here tonight. Madam Chair, that concludes our recognition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gore, and thank you, Mr. Kilgore. And to these student athletes, the fact that we're able to say that we have scholar athletes speaks volumes, because this shows that these students not only get it done in the classroom, but they also get it done on the field and in the pool. And I know we recognized several people tonight, but Ms. Mayer, could you stand just for a second? We just want to recognize you. Ms. Mayer coordinates all the athletic programs for the school division and has done so for years. And she does it with grace, with style, with patience, with dignity. And I can tell you, trying to coordinate the athletic program for a school division this size is like sometimes nailing jello to a tree. And Ms. Mayer makes sure that every time our athletes step on the field or on the court or at the pool, that they, along with the Athletic Directors at the various schools, represent Hampton City Schools in a first-class manner. So we just want to thank you for that. Are there any other comments from School Board members? Thank you again. The next item of business is item three, our consent agenda, which consists of item 3.01, personnel report number 2019-06. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Ms. Mugler?
The Superintendent was distracting me. Imagine that.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, since Dr. Smith wants to start talking... Give you an opportunity, exactly right. The next item of business is Superintendent and staff reports, and I turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin the presentation just shortly. Let me begin by saying, "Good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the School Board, and to say to you that it is indeed my pleasure to recommend to you a balanced budget for fiscal year 2020 that focuses on employee compensation, teacher retention, as well as a strong benefits package. Sincere appreciation is extended to Ms. Dorch and members of her team." And I would kindly ask them to stand. Ms. Dorch and members of her team, please stand so that we can recognize you. As well as members of the Division Leadership Team for their hard work and attention to detail. I would also like to welcome the 2019 Hampton City Schools and Old Dominion University's Leadership Cohort. I understand that they are here as a part of their coursework with Dr. Cagiano in terms of finance, and his particular class is a part of the cohort that's led by Dr. Haynes. I would ask members of the 2019 Hampton City Schools and Old Dominion University's cohort to please stand so that we can recognize you. Thank you. I'd like to talk to you just briefly, introduce the objectives for this presentation, and to highlight the specifics, as it includes the fiscal year 2020 budget development process, which includes the strategic focus model, as well as the FY 2020 School Board priorities. The FY 2020 recommended operating budget, which is Fund 50, which includes proposed revenues and proposed expenditures, as well as next steps in the budget process. And so when we look at aligning the budget process and the development to our strategic plan, our strategic plan, the 2020 Vision for the Future, is a living document, and we have said that over and over again, that really drives all of the decision-making across the division. Budget decisions were analyzed through the lens of the strategic focus model. The core work is to maximize every child's learning, which is why it serves as the center core of this particular model. The center is then surrounded by equally important pieces of our success. For example, creating safe, nurturing environments and attracting, developing, and retaining exceptional staff. The learning, the staff, and the environment then is supported by that of making certain that we are enhancing family and community engagement and satisfaction and maintaining effective, efficient, and innovative support systems for both students as well as staff members. Finally, if we look at the model, all three inner circles are made possible by managing fiscal resources effectively as well as efficiently. Our next slide, when we look at the FY 2020 budget development process. Each year, we're reminded that certainly the school division embarks upon developing the upcoming year's budget. So the budget development process continues from November through the month of May, and that's important to note as well. And then there are many steps in this collaborative process. You'll note by the slide here, we certainly obtain information for the budget development process through what we consider the Budget Committee Team. We then try to estimate the salary and fringe benefits in terms of the cost. We estimate the fall and spring student membership. We give attention to staffing projections. We look at expenditure pressures as well as savings. And then we move into the revenue estimates from all sources, at the state level, also at the local level. And we also examine the federal funds that we're going to receive and miscellaneous funds as well. And then we begin to prioritize based upon expenditure pressures as well as the revenue that we expect to receive. So then the FY 2020 budget priorities, you will note that we ask, certainly the Board members, we ask you to provide input and to identify priorities. And so this particular budget is reflective of the School Board priorities that you will hear this evening. In particular, competitive compensation, teacher recruitment and retention, academies of Hampton, pre-K through 12th grade facilities, as it relates to capital improvements, along with areas of ongoing operational focus that include school safety, increasing student achievement, and certainly community relations as well. When we go to the next slide, so let's talk then briefly, as we go through the presentation, about the FY 2020 proposed school operating fund budget, which we note as Fund 50, the moment that we have all been waiting for. So then the proposed operating revenue is 211 million. This is an increase over the fiscal year '19 budget of 8.9 million. The majority of the school division's revenue comes from state funds, as they make up 51% of the total revenue. of the total revenue. State sales tax makes up 11% of the total revenue, as noted on this slide, and then local revenue makes up 36% of the total revenue. And then other miscellaneous funds, which includes pharmacy revenues of 1.9 million, Medicaid reimbursement of 1 million, and indirect cost revenue of 1 million, make up 2% of the total revenue. And then federal funds make up less than 1% of the total revenue. When we examine the slide here with state funds and state sales tax, state funds and state sales tax projections are based on the General Assembly's recommended budget. The state develops its budget on a two-year basis, and that's important for us to note. So the FY 2020 budget is the second year of the 2018-2020 biennium budget. Two of the main drivers for the state funds are the local composite index, as well as the March 31 average daily membership. The local composite index, or better known, sorry, Mrs. Henry, the LCI, as we refer to it, used by the state to determine a locality's ability to fund education costs under the standards of quality, and you will quite frequently hear us refer to that as SOQ funding. So the LCI can range from 0 to 0.8. And so for FY 2020, the LCI for Hampton is 0.2741. The lower, of course, the LCI, the more state funds a division will typically receive, and I say typically receive because we expect that to happen, but certainly some years that may fluctuate as well. The average daily membership, or the ADM, is a projection of the average number of students that will be enrolled in a school division between September and March. So for FY 2020, our March 31 ADM is projected to be 18,455 students. The FY 2019 budgeted ADM was 18,600 students, so this is a difference of 145 students. An estimated 130 million, including sales tax, is projected from the state, and so you'll see that as noted on the slide as well. We have 5.2 million, a $5.2 million increase compared to the FY 19 budget. So much of the increase in state funding for the proposed FY 2020 budget is driven by the $3.6 million state compensation supplement. And then other changes in state funding include the following: an increase of 800,000 in sales tax funds, an increase of 700,000 in special education regional program funds, an increase of 500,000 in one-time funds for the Academies of Hampton, an increase of 1 million in at-risk and supplemental lottery funds. And of this 1 million increase, $1 million increase, there's an increase of 600,000 for at-risk funds, and there is an increase of 400,000 for supplemental lottery funds. There is a 1.4 million net decrease in remaining programs, of which 1 million is related to basic aid. And of course, the basic aid, we know that primarily, when we look at student enrollment, it certainly impacted, or will impact, the basic aid funding. Other decreases include programs such as remedial summer school, state funding for six fewer Virginia preschool initiative slots, from 540 to 534 VPI slots, and also a slight decrease in foster care and English as a second language as well. So the General Assembly proposed changes to, also to the school counselor staffing ratios, but the changes were higher, or actually, those changes were quite different in terms of what the governor had proposed. So the General Assembly proposed the following ratios: elementary school from 1 to 500, to that of 1 to 455. At the middle school level, from 1 to 400, to 1 to 370 students, and for high school, from 1 per 350 students to 1 per 325 students. And that did not impact us here in Hampton, because we're already staffing in terms at the school counselor level, certainly to meet, and we're beyond that. So we're beyond the staffing ratios by 5.5 counselors here in Hampton. So it did not impact the budget development process because of where we currently reside. When we go to local funds, local funds are received from the city of Hampton based on a funding formula that shares 61.83% of residential, personal property, and utility tax revenues with the school division. And so the city of Hampton and Hampton City Schools, as you know, we continue to work closely together in developing the budget, and we're proud of that particular relationship. So the local contribution will be 75.5 million for the FY 2020 budget year. And so this is an overall increase of 1.7 million when compared to the FY 2019 budget. The city continues to collaborate with us as a partner, also in support of the Academies of Hampton, and they have made a commitment, and of course, this is based on then the city manager's recommendation to city council and their subsequent approval, but they have made a commitment at this particular point to one-time funding beyond what we will receive in terms of the annual formula-driven revenue of $350,000 as one-time funds to support the Academies of Hampton. Let's go to federal funds. Federal funds are received through the Federal Impact Aid and the JROTC program, and it is projected that $810,000 will be received in FY 2020. The Federal Impact Aid is a federal assistance program to help minimize the impact of lost revenue from tax-exempt federal property in the city. For the JROTC program, each respective military branch provides reimbursement for a portion of the salary of the military instructors who work with our young people in such programs. So the division also receives funds from federal grant programs such as Title I as well, and that, of course, falls within Fund 60 reimbursable projects. But for Title I, we receive over $7 million, but that certainly was presented as a part of the Fund 60. I'm taking a quick glance over at those members of the Finance Department to make sure that I'm covering all of the details that they told me to cover. So when we go to this particular slide, in terms of other miscellaneous revenue, it is projected to be 4.7 million for FY 2020, and includes remaining funding sources which do not fall under state, federal, or local funds. The three largest sources in this particular area include 1.9 million of revenue that is generated by our onsite pharmacy center, 1 million in Medicaid reimbursement funds, and 1 million in indirect cost revenue that's generated from food and nutrition services as well as federal grants. We'll move to the FY 2020 proposed operating budget. The total proposed budget of 211 million is allocated based on the following major classifications: 73% of the budget is allocated to instruction. Salaries and benefits, which fall within that area of instruction, salaries and benefits are 138 million, or 90% of the instructional costs. And I think that's important for me to note. 7% is allocated to administration, attendance, and health. 5% is allocated to transportation. 9% is allocated to operations and maintenance. 1% is allocated to fund transfers. So when you look at fund transfers, for example, from Fund 50, contributions to athletics and PEG television, that is 1%, and then 5% is allocated to technology. Did I get that right, Ms. Dorch? All right. Let's go to the next slide here. Let's look at the FY 2020 budget overview, taking a deeper dive into the allocation of the expenditures. So the starting place for the FY 2020 budget development was the base budget of 203.8 million in terms of dollars. The base budget is calculated as the FY 2019 approved budget plus the FY 2019 budgeted attrition savings. So during the budget development process, 8.8 million of expenditure pressures were identified, 1.9 million of budget additions are being recommended, 1.6 million of savings were identified and repurposed, and the FY 2020 budgeted attrition savings are projected to be 1.8 million. And you'll get greater details, certainly of these expenditures, on some of the other slides that we'll highlight a little bit later. Someone's clicking for me, I'm not sure who. Oh, you are. Great. Let's look at the FY 2020 expenditure pressures. Expenditure pressures are primarily centered around the healthcare cost and employee compensation, as well as anticipated increases in our contribution to the New Horizons Regional Program, which provides services in terms of career and technical education, as well as some regional special education programs and services that we access through New Horizons. The New Horizons contribution was originally estimated to increase by $312,000. However, as of yesterday, we were informed that the increase would be 174,000. So this allowed us to repurpose 138,000 for other funding priorities as a part of this particular budget. Let's look at healthcare costs. As a part of our focus to attract and retain employees, which includes competitive compensation and a strong benefits package, Hampton City Schools is self-insured and provides healthcare benefits to all full-time employees, which include a health and wellness center, as well as a pharmacy opportunity for staff members who qualify for that. So if we look at the healthcare costs, they're projected to increase by 9.2% or in dollars, 1.4 million. It is proposed that this budget, within this budget, that 100% of the increase be absorbed by the Hampton City Schools, resulting in no increase to employee premiums for FY 20. I want to say that again, that we would cover 100%. I heard someone say yes back there. And so we would not pass on, that would be an unencumbered 3% salary increase, and you'll recall that as of last year, it was 2%. So when you look at over the biennium, it would be a 5%, and in this year with the 3%, we would not have any of the insurance passed on to employees in terms of the increase. I want to say also that without the pharmacy and wellness center, the projected increase would have been more than the 9.2%. Since the beginning of the wellness center, Hampton City Schools' projected cost avoidance has been 17.1 million. That's pretty significant in terms of cost avoidance. And 2.4 million in just the last 12 months, between September of 2017 and August of 2018. And so employees have also experienced an estimated savings of over half a million dollars when we look at between the pharmacy and the wellness center. So the benefit of that is pretty important. The total cost around, when we look at to run and to operate, is about 3 million, but 61% is offset by revenue generated by the pharmacy, which is projected to be 1.9 million for FY 2020. Employee compensation. We want to remain competitive and certainly continue to move the needle forward in this particular area. So in light of rising healthcare costs, we want to maintain the employee healthcare benefits and keep that in the forefront as we go forward. As noted, that we are recommending a 3% unencumbered salary increase for all employees, as proposed by the FY 2020, and as noted on this particular slide. And because, as I said, of a 2% raise that was provided in FY 2019, it will then certainly equal to a 5% raise over the 2018-2020 biennium. Let's look at the budget additions. The budget additions total 1.9 million and include personnel additions, salary adjustments, and non-personnel additions as well. When we look at the position changes for the FY 2020 budget, 10.5 positions were added to the budget. However, I think it's important to note that 5.25 vacant positions were eliminated. The net change to the budget then is 6.25 positions with an estimated cost of $340,000 in salaries and benefits. So the majority of these positions were added during the FY 2019 budget to address class size reduction when we look at K3, and it's important that we maintain that class size, those class size reductions in accordance with what is recommended and provided, in terms of we receive it from the Department of Education. We also added positions based upon student needs, and also we wanted to enhance school safety as well. So these changes include three: teacher positions, two special ed teacher positions, 1.5 instructional assistants, and three security officers. We look at salary scale adjustments. The largest salary adjustments were made to the school bus driver pay and the teacher salary scale, so I'll talk a little bit about that. We're recommending a $1 per hour increase to the school bus driver pay in addition to the 3% salary increase. For the teacher salary scale adjustments, we are recommending condensing the teacher salary scale, and I want to make certain that we all hear this, from 37 steps to 30 And we have coined this as this is a bold move in our continued efforts to recruit and retain teachers. Teachers will have the ability to earn a higher salary sooner in their careers by condensing the salary scale. Our recommendation also includes adding $300 to each step between steps 15 and 29, in addition to the 3% unencumbered. steps fifteen and twenty-nine, in addition to the three percent unencumbered salary increase that we're recommending. These adjustments to the teacher scale, or to the teacher scale, when we look at these adjustments, we want to make certain that individuals understand that it is beyond that of the three percent unencumbered salary increase. There are some factors that we're aware of that are very important when we talk about recruiting and retaining teachers. For example, effective training and preparation, support for new teachers, teacher conditions including supportive leadership, and competitive compensation. And what we know here in Hampton, we provide a robust professional development plan that supports both new and experienced teachers. And we also, we have also implemented strategies and programs to improve the climate and culture throughout the school division. So if you approve these recommendations, Hampton's thirty-year teacher salary will then move from approximately fifty-eight thousand to approximately sixty-six thousand dollars. That's pretty significant as we move forward. You guys can clap if you want to. I want to go through and look at the academies of Hampton and also recognize that through so much work of individuals, our state legislators who represent Hampton on many sides in terms of whether serving as a delegate or on the senate side, that we were able to gain funds of a little over a half a million dollars for the academies of Hampton as one-time funds. That's pretty significant. And we have been able to certainly, or in this, on this particular slide, you will see what we intend to use those funds for, certainly to support curriculum development, equipment, and onsite visits for other school divisions to come and visit and see the great things that we believe that are occurring here in Hampton relative to high school transformation and transformation really from pre-K through twelfth grade as we talk about awareness of careers from that of the pre-K level all the way through twelfth grade. And then summer support for students scheduling at each high school. One high school counselor who will work additional time to support students scheduling associated with the academies of Hampton, and that's very important for us. Let's talk about the expenditure savings and budget reductions. When developing the budget, the process included taking a look at our current budget and reviewing each area of potential savings. So the proposed budget includes one point six million in expenditure savings and reductions. And these savings are repurposed to assist in funding budget additions and expenditure pressures. The proposal also includes budgeted or anticipated payroll savings attrition of one point eight million. And based on the current projections of salaries and benefits, one point one million of payroll savings above the budget attritions were identified and repurposed in the budget to help fund expenditure pressures for healthcare and budget priorities and the additions. As detailed also on this particular slide, the remaining savings and reductions totaled around five hundred thousand. And included in the savings, we have fifty percent split of utility cost for rental facilities with Mary Peak and Mallory with Fund Sixty-Five. And then certainly professional services related to outsourcing of substitute teachers were reduced based on projected costs for next year. The moment maybe that we all have been waiting for and excited when I talk about the bottom line in almost the last slide, right? So in summary, the superintendent's recommended budget is two hundred and eleven million, and it includes eight point eight one million of expenditure pressures, which include four point one million for a three percent compensation increase for all employees, as noted on the previous slide, and four point five million in healthcare costs, which includes a one point four million increase for healthcare insurance premiums. One point five seven million of expenditure additions, funding priorities, which include three hundred and forty thousand for six point two-five positions that were discussed earlier. Five hundred and twenty-five thousand for the academies of Hampton, as noted on the previous slide. Four hundred and eighty-six thousand in teacher salary scale adjustments. Two hundred thousand in school bus driver pay increase above the three percent salary increase for all employees. Three hundred and thirty thousand of operational additions, which include one hundred and one thousand for the transfer of cafeteria monitors from the Food and Nutrition Services Fund, that's Fund Fifty-One to Fund Fifty. And we think that's important because of the service that they provide is certainly more closely aligned to Fund Fifty and that of Fund Fifty-One. And then three point four five million of cost savings and budget reductions, including budgeted attrition of one point eight million. So certainly from my perspective, this recommended budget for FY 2020 focuses on continuing to move the needle forward in the areas of employee competitive compensation, teacher retention, and a strong benefits package. What are the next steps as we move forward? Certainly a time for the board to deliberate next week regarding, next week regarding the superintendent's recommended budget, and also an opportunity for public hearing on the proposed operating budget here at Jones on March the twentieth at six-thirty. And then certainly the school board, the budget's then up for consideration in terms of a vote from the board as it relates to the FY 2020 proposed budget. It's scheduled for March the twenty-seventh. It has been a pleasure to present this budget to you. And I'll stop and ask Madam Chair, members of the board, if there are specific questions that you have. I certainly will answer those questions and if not, yield to the appropriate person on the team to provide you with the level of detail that you may need in consideration of this particular proposed budget.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for that presentation and the exceptional work by your team. Are there any questions from board members regarding what we've heard today? Yes, Ms.?
I would think I don't have a question because we've been so well briefed all through the process, and I thank you for that. You know, there is always a wish list we have, and if we had a money tree out here in the back, there'd be other things we would add to this budget. But it's good to have a budget that's sound and that's balanced and that is going to give teachers a raise because that's always a priority for us. And to not have a concomitant raise in health costs while we're at it is a big factor. And health costs are getting to be ridiculous, and the efforts that we've made, starting with Dr. Schiflett's getting us into the wellness center business, it's been a big factor in keeping our healthcare from skyrocketing, and we appreciate that. So it's nice to have a balanced budget. It's nice to think that the city, as well as the state, are going to be in a position to give us more funds. And thank you for all your hard work in getting this accomplished.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Mugler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Smith, for the presentation and all the details. I have just a few questions.
Absolutely.
And let's see where I want to start here. Question about the six fewer VPI students, is that based on student enrollment reductions?
Primarily, you want to talk to the VPI?
Good evening. So beginning with 2019, the state started to reduce the number of slots that were allocated to all divisions. If you remember last year, for the fiscal year nineteen budget development process, there was about three hundred and forty thousand dollars reduction in state funding because of the reduced slots. So really, this decrease of six slots is really a continuation of that change that started at the beginning of the biennium.
Because we need to build that program, not reduce it. But I know it's not here. I understand.
And we're hopeful, Mrs. Mugler. I know that as we receive next year's budget at the state level, that additional funding, our hope, and that is that we will see some additional funding for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, and that is our hope.
Great. Yeah, that's my hope. You mentioned the positions that are related to class size reduction, student needs, that includes three teachers, two special education teachers, school security.
Yes, that was, the SSOs, the school security officers.
And then there was one other thing that I didn't catch because I was trying to list...
Kindergarten instructional assistance as well.
Okay. And that's one?
One point five.
The, what was the bus dri, the bus driver number after we've come? You mentioned a number, you gave us the numbers of the six point two-five teachers, the academies, the scale, and the cafeteria monitors, and I did not catch the number that on the bus driver increase, whether it was two hundred and...
Yes, it's around two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, right about two hundred. Okay. And I think it's, just, I'll mention this, Dr. Smith, you did sort of allude to it in the presentation, but that five hundred and twenty-five thousand for the academies is the one-time funding that the state is providing.
That is correct. And I will say certainly, you know, when we look at the one-time funding at the state level, it was through a budget amendment, and that's pretty significant for a school division when we talk about a budget amendment of that to a local school division. So I certainly believe that it was a vote of confidence in this important work that we're engaged in in terms of transforming the way we teach and learn, especially at the high school level.
Yeah, absolutely. Very happy to see that. And I just want our listening audience to understand that that's not money we're diverting over to the academies. It's money that's directed specifically to the academies by the state of Virginia.
That is correct.
So I just think it's important to note, and it is a very significant detail that it was a budget amendment. I think that's all the questions I have for you. I did want to commend the budget team and Dr. Smith, especially on all the work that you've done on the teacher scale and the change that that's going to make for people, and particularly the change that's going to make for the average salary within this division. That's really a nice sounding change. And I know that, you know, you all were crunching numbers all the way through today. So, but I, as a board member, would love to see the detailed salary scale and what it ends up looking like based upon these newest changes, particularly, you know, these steps fifteen to twenty-nine, and how that's going to flush out. Is it through twenty-nine? And then so thirty would not be affected.
Right. It's fifteen to twenty-nine and thirty back, actually, Ms. Ruth, when we reduce the scale from now thirty-seven to thirty, there will be an impact at level thirty because of the fact that we're condensing from thirty-seven to thirty. So the additional three hundred dollars from steps fifteen to twenty-nine, we believe that it is the right direction to go in as we begin to look at the teacher's salary scale from a holistic perspective.
Okay. It sounds great in my mind's eye. I do want to see it on paper.
We'll get that to you.
So do we know how soon we might be able to look at what that looks like?
We should be able to provide you with that no later than Friday through your budget book, in terms of development.
Great, great. Okay. Thank you so much.
And we thought that it would be important to provide you with accurate information in your budget book rather than, you know, given the changes as of yesterday. So we wanted to really have those changes reflected in the presentation and then update the budget book so that you would have the accurate numbers reflected in that budget book. And then once we provide you with that, it would also be open for public consumption. So we wanted the public to have that adjustment in terms of the numbers with the latest information as well.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Mason?
Yes. First of all, thank you very much through the process. I know I asked a ton of questions as we were going through this thing. So I do thank you for indulging me as I'm learning this whole process.
Not a problem.
But I do want to commend you because I know we, you know, my issue or my concern was looking at the number of school counselors and the legislation that had come down, and I know that was one of the things you guys took into consideration as you made some of the changes to the budget. But also, my question is, in reference to the, the more I thought about with the money coming from the state for the academies of Hampton.
Yes.
Is that money to springboard us into the process of becoming a demonstration site for the state so that we can invite others in to see what we're doing with the academies of Hampton?
And that is a part of the consideration as well, and we articulate that very message that Hampton, we believe that we're ready to be a demonstration center or site for the Commonwealth. And so the investment then moves us in that direction and allows us to make available that experience with the materials associated with the visit as well. And so then it would not be direct cost to the school division, but through this one-time funding made available.
And down the road, that could also feed into possible sustainability as far as we continue to, you know, implement the academies of Hampton and invite others in as well.
You know, each budget year at the state level, it's like making sausage, as in the school division, and so hope springs eternal, although it's not a strategy.
Yes.
Yes. Any more questions? Dr. Woodhouse, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Smith, for such a wonderful presentation this evening. The only question, what I may have too, I wanted to highlight the point seven million dollar increase for the special education regional program funds. I thought that was wonderful. Could you tell us what that's going to consist of for listening?
Yes. And so when, of course, with our participation with New Horizons as a regional program, each school division receives an allocation or our amount in terms of what we would need to contribute, and it's based upon trend data. And so typically, they will look at the last three years, and in some cases, the last five years, but certainly the last three, to make a determination in terms of Hampton City Schools' contribution based upon our student participation. So the number of students that we have participating in the area of career and technical education, the number of young people that we have in terms of the regional special education programs as well and services that are received.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
The only other question I had was, I think I may have jotted down the wrong numbers here because I thought I overheard you say one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars for instructions. I didn't see it. I was looking for it somewhere everywhere. I may have overlooked it or may have misunderstood you.
Yeah, you want to?
In that graph? So the total amount for that's allocated for instruction is one hundred and fifty-four million. But of that amount, one hundred and thirty-eight million is for salaries and benefits that are instructional related.
Okay.
Okay, that's what it was. Uh-huh. Okay, thank you very much.
We're commiserating.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Dr. Woodhouse?
Oh, that's it. Thank you so much.
Oh, that's it, thank you so much.
Any other questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Smith, I have two questions.
Absolutely.
So, the first one, I think, and I was trying to go based off the presentation that we also got from last year, and I do remember that, I think it was mentioned that it was a statewide deduction. The ADM from last year, projection was $18,600, and then this one is $18,455. Is that just a reduction, not a reduction, a deduction across the state, or is that just?
The impact, of course, it's here in Hampton. It's based upon our average daily membership. But I think as Ms. Dorst presented to the board earlier, that that is not something unique to Hampton City Schools, but across the Commonwealth of Virginia.
I think that was what I was trying to remember from last year. And then the last one, Ms. Mugler went into it. It deals with the compensation chart, and I think my only question was for those employees, and I was just wondering for those that may be above that 30 mark, what happens in that case, the 30 step?
So, for subsequent years, for example, let's say whether it's a 2% or 3%, that is still added and calculated as a part of their base salary. So, they still are impacted by the salary increase, but no longer on the teacher scale.
Okay. I was kind of thinking of more of how that SAT chart, kind of how it got, went from 24 to 12, that's what I was thinking of. Yeah. I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Any more questions or comments by board members? Dr. Smith, again, we'd like to thank you and your team for the hard work, and it's been said that this is a sound budget, that this is a balanced budget, and I think it's important, just as all board members recognize, that we continue to be fiscally responsible because we have to be great stewards of the taxpayers' money. I think this board reflects that. I think too often, not here in Hampton, but some people feel that the money just comes from the sky, and you don't have to really tell how you're spending it. But here in Hampton, we understand that this is taxpayers' money. So, we have to make sure that we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, which is what you've done. I do think, just as Ms. Mugler said, having been able to propose to condense the steps on the teacher scale, I think that's going to add a lot to one of this goal's key goals, which is compensation. It's hard to keep up with other school divisions around you because if they give 10 and we give 6, we're still behind 4, and then they give. But I think a good effort has been made to show that we value all of our employees in Hampton City Schools. I'm especially pleased that we were able to broaden it, to add the additional dollar per hour for our bus drivers. Like Ms. Henry said, if we had a money tree, we could do everything for everybody, but the fact that our bus drivers, you know, we refer to them as the driving force of Hampton City Schools. Truth be told, these often are the first people that our students see when they head to school. And these bus drivers set the tone, in many cases, for the kind of day that our students will have. And it's to be commended, especially when they're looking this way, with 20 busy people back this way.
Absolutely.
And also, keeping in mind all the values we have in Hampton City Schools, so I'm glad to see that as well.
We believe it's a bold step in the right direction.
It sounds bold, and it sounds right. Okay, thank you again. Our next item for business is number five. He's getting applause in case you can't see that on camera. Yeah, he's like a rock star. Next item, number five, is hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol as we will ask all speakers to adhere to it?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. I've received four requests to speak. We'll begin with Ms. Debbie Dubay.
Good evening. I'm here with four students from dual enrollment English for Hampton City Schools. I'm just the parent of Adana Dubay. Orlando Robinson's mom is present also as well. These are kids that have concern that have been in dual enrollment for two years now, almost going on two years. They did lose their dual enrollment teacher. She went out on FMLA. Hampton City Schools think that they've come up with a solution where they've had a physical teacher in the classroom, and now it's gone to online. If they don't like it, they've been asked to just drop out with nothing in between. These are seniors. This is going to mess up their money. She's been accepted over 63 colleges, has a full ride to Virginia Tech at this moment. If she loses her dual enrollment credits, it's going to change her whole life and everything that she is applied for. And I just don't feel that it's fair for these kids. And I don't think, like, it's almost like you working 28, 29 years for your retirement, and two months before you can retire, it's the right-to-work state, they let you go, and you have no retirement. So, these kids would, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of these kids because I don't know everything. I just know that my daughter woke up yesterday morning at 4 o'clock in the morning thinking of dual enrollment. Seven kids dropped out with two and a half months left of a class, and they're losing that credit to be put in honors English, and nobody cares. It's like, it's just, it's unheard of. I even offered and had a long conversation with Mr. Davis. I offered out of my own pocket to pay a professional professor to come in for the one class from now to the end of school, and I will pay for it upfront. I will bring you cash to your office to get these kids through the last two and a half months of school. That's how passionate I am of this, and it's not fair to them. And these are kids that have 3.0, 3.75, 3.9 GPAs. We're not talking knuckleheads. We're talking futures. And you can't tell me that nobody in Hampton can teach this Thomas Nelson course. No disrespect to you, Dr. Smith. I know you're very, very busy when I brought it to your attention. You knew the literature very, very well. Ms. Hardy's an English teacher. I can't believe that you, that all these higher education people can't give up an hour and 40 minutes every other day to teach this one class. But we can have two principals, four assistant principals, okay, in a lunchroom for two and a half hours, looking over kids, eating, making sure that there's not a fight. There's money for that. Something needs to be done. This kid is out on mental health. Her anxiety and her stress for dual enrollment. She's a baby. You know, you want her to, all of a sudden, she wants to be a lawyer, but all of a sudden, you have her in dual enrollment, and now you expect her to go and prosecute a criminal in court. Like, you want them to change from one day to the next, and it just can't be done that way. So, let me have you talk to the kids, and maybe they can give you their perspective on it.
Ms. Dubay, you're finished?
I guess.
Okay, because I think I have all the students' forms. Did they sign it?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just call, Orlando Robinson is next?
She would like to speak next. You want to go?
What is your name, pumpkin?
Ariana Edie.
Thank you. Could you pronounce that again?
Ariana Edie.
Ariana Edie, okay, Ms. Edie, go ahead.
I believe it'd be an easier task for us to, like, switch from an actual teacher to online course if we had more support in the classroom. Like, the substitute has been asked to help us less, for whatever reason. And considering the course is, like, English literature, the stuff we're reading is, like, old English, and then we were told to, like, write analysis on it. And like, we're switching from, like, doing other stuff that wasn't like that with our actual teacher to writing poetry analysis stuff, and we were never prepared to do that. Like, for two months without our teacher, we were, like, playing Uno in class.
Okay, are you prepared now, Mr. Orlando Robinson? Okay, yes, sir.
I was worried words that dropped out, well, recently, I just dropped out. It was okay until they told us up, not to start helping us, and she stopped reading. I just, it was no support. We couldn't do anything. It just wasn't, it wasn't adding up. We went from our teacher helping us every day to we barely get to talk to the teacher at all. Just wasn't working out.
The teacher that's physically in the class is not communicating with the online Ms. Redding at Bethel.
Okay.
And that's where the problem also.
Okay, we're going to have to go just one by one for this, okay, because you can't yield your time. But I'm going to go to, is it Adana?
Yes.
Okay, Adana Dubay.
So, we started out the year with our teacher. Within a month, she disappeared, and we didn't hear anything for months and months and months. And we were just sitting there, just waiting. And then, all of a sudden, we hear that she's out on FMLA. So, then they bring her back on, still on FMLA, to teach through, on the, through video chat. She talked through video chat, and it wasn't working because for most of us had Fs for most of the quarter till just about the end of the quarter. So, now we have a dual enrollment teacher from, the dual enrollment teacher from Bethel, and she teaches strictly through the Thomas Nelson website. And there's, but there's no teaching. There's nothing being taught. It's, that's not a class. So, we feel like there should be something in place for the future in case something like this happens again, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's just informed me that he will be contacting you all, okay, and someone from his staff. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Our next item for business is item six, deliberation, and it consists of 6.01 student fees for 2019-2020. Are there any questions from any board members regarding our student fees? Any questions about student fees? Okay, we will move forward, and that will be moved to action at our next meeting. Oh, the 27th, that, okay. This will be moved to action on the 27th, not the 20th, because that's going to be our public hearing on the budget. Now, moving on to number seven, items for actions. This includes 7.01 2019-2020 school calendar and 2020-2021 planning calendar, 7.02 resolution for VSBA Business Honor Roll Ferguson Enterprises, 7.03 revision of school board policy KL, public complaints, 7.04 revision of school board policy AE, school division goals and objectives, 7.05 review of school board policy AF, comprehensive plan, 7.06 review of school board policy AGA, recognition of accomplishment, 7.07 revision of school board policy BDA, board meetings, 7.08 revision of school board policy BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, 7.09 revision of school board policy BDDB agenda, 7.10 review of school board policy CB, school superintendent, 7.11 review of school board policy CFA, attendance officers, 7.12 review of school board policy CH, superintendent's authority to adopt regulations, and 7.13 revision of school board policy KKA, service animals in public schools.
Madam Chairman?
I suggest that we vote on 7.01 and 7.02 separately, and then perhaps address the others as a block. So, I would move that we approve the school calendar and planning calendar as presented in item 7.01.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and second by Mr. Kilgore that we approve item 7.01, which is the 2019-2020 school calendar and 2020-21 planning calendar. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Madam Chair, just a comment with regard to the new legislation regarding Labor Day start time. And obviously, it didn't come forward until this planning was well into its, you know, near end. And so, I'm perfectly satisfied moving forward with the 1920 calendar as it is presented. And I know that the draft calendar for 2021 is a draft calendar, but I would hope that when the committee reconvenes next year, that they will take into account the opportunity to start prior to Labor Day. That is something that has been put before the legislature time and time again, and that it was finally passed was a darn near miracle. And it is some, and why is that important? Because what it can do for our students in Hampton is to put them on a level playing field with their peers across the Commonwealth who do start before Labor Day and get instructional time in long before our students are able to get it in. And they take the SOLs all on the same date across the state, everywhere. So, it's very important. That legislation is hugely important to the success of young people. It really wasn't about, we just want to start school before Labor Day. There was a real significant meaning behind why that was passed. So, I just, this was my opportunity to address that particular component of this, and I do hope that it will be considered seriously for the 2021 calendar.
That's a good point that you brought up, Ms. Mugler, and it also explained to a lot of people, even at home, just why we were looking at the start before Labor Day being important for our students. Dr. Haynes, I hate to put you on the spot.
He is, he's here.
And he sits down in his chair. But, Dr. Haynes, when you and members of But, Dr. Haynes, when you and members of the Calendar Committee had talked before, did you not address the fact that you would be able to come back once that legislation was signed to see what you all would do for the Planning Committee? For the planning calendar?
Our internal Calendar Committee, we have to get together collectively with the Regional Calendar Committee and all of the surrounding school districts. We're looking forward to this possibility, so we will reconvene and come back with some additional options for the 2020-2021 calendar.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion? Okay, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. How would the Board like to handle the rest of the items for action? Do you want to do 7.2?
How about the other?
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move approval of action item 7.2.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Ms. Mugler that we approve action 7.02, which is the resolution for VSBA Business Honor Role Ferguson Enterprises. Is there any discussion regarding this? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Now, for the rest, 7.03 through 7.13, is there a motion to probably take this as a block?
Madam Chair, I move approval of action item 7.03 through 7.13 as a block.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Dr. Woodhouse that we take item 7.03 through 7.13 as a block. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. As we move into information, our next School Board meeting actually is going to be March 27th, but the next meeting of the Board is going to be March 20th, if that makes sense, next Wednesday, because that will be the actual public hearing we will be holding. And that will be 6:30 here at Jones Magnet Middle School. Dr. Smith, do you have any information to come before the Board?
Yes, Madam Chair, just two items. You have before you two documents that, that we provided you, that we plan to send forward, one, a Budget at a Glance one-pager, as well as a Frequently Asked Questions document, and our plans include making both of these documents available to staff this evening via email and on the Hampton City Schools' website. Additionally, I want to say that we will certainly provide the appropriate follow-up with regards to the public comments that were made, and I would ask Dr. Woods certainly to just briefly share for our viewing audience, I think it's important, relative to the commitment that we have with Thomas Nelson regarding dual enrollment, so that the viewing audience can be very clear that we have certainly staff members who are present relative to supporting our young people in, in that regard, and I think it's important that we, we provide you, and I know Dr. Woods made herself available today to meet with any young person concerning a, any concern that they had relative to dual enrollment, and at that particular time, no one made themselves available to meet with Dr. Woods.
Yes, so, for our instructors who work with our dual enrollment, there are also teachers in Hampton City Schools currently for the most part. We do hire, we have hired a Thomas Nelson licensed teacher to work with the students at Hampton High School after one of our employees left. So, the teachers who work with dual enrollment have to be licensed by Thomas Nelson and licensed by Hampton City Schools. And so, we currently have, after the teacher left, we have two instructors working with them. One is the online licensed Thomas Nelson instructor, as well as we have another licensed Thomas Nelson instructor in the classroom as well. So, there are two instructors working with those students from Hampton High. But all of our instructors have to be licensed by both institutions.
Just want to make it clear in terms of our commitment to our young people and their overall success. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Woods. Any other information?
Madam Chair, that concludes the superintendent's follow-up items.
Thank you. Are there any items of information to be shared by board members? Mr. Xavier Williams?
I have homework.
Homework.
Okay. That's good information to have, okay? All right, hearing none, no more business to come before the Board. This meeting stands adjourned.